Good afternoon, this is the Thurston County Board of Health Public Hearing for November 27th, 2017. I'm Commissioner Bud Blake, Chair of the Board this year, and I'd like to do an introduction. This is Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner John Hutchings, Lab Anita Beaumont, Clerk of the Board, County Manager Romero Chavez, Assistant County Manager Budget Officer Robin Campbell, Public Health Social Services Shelley Slaughter, she is the Director thereof. With that in mind, the public hearing is to receive testimony on our ordinance amending the sanitary code for Thurston County, Article 1, Appendix A, also known as the Environmental Health Fee Schedule. The purpose of this hearing is to review and receive testimony on a proposed ordinance to amend the Environmental Health Division Fee Schedule and raise the fees overall by 10 percent. So, if you've never been to the public hearing, there's three minutes that'll be posted on the clock up here. Lab Anita posted the three minutes. Now you go from three minutes to zero, and while you're at the podium, and if it goes eh, and then when you hit zero, I'll ask you to start finishing up your comments. We believe in the First Amendment, so we want you to finish them up, but at the same time, I'll give you prompts to start, finish them up, and get you from the podium as they're... When you come to the podium, I ask you to speak, give me your first name and last name, and generally where you're from in the county. And with that in mind, you cannot delegate your three minutes to anybody else. Now I ask every single person to silence their cell phones when the person's at the podium, has the respect of being able to speak without any kind of nuances. When you come to the podium, please speak to the Board, do not speak to individual members or the body of audience behind you collectively. You're here to address the Board, and we take that as far as our business and what this is all about. So with that in mind, I'm gonna go down the sheet, first come, first served, in terms of those who signed in and gave me the yes here on the right to wish to testify. And the first person I have is Min...oh, I better do some staff background, that's where I'm going with this. Yeah, Art Starry is our guy, he is gonna give a little bit of background for background information, who's got the written comments, and just general information. Art, I got ahead of myself, but I caught myself too, so. Art, how you doing?
Oh, pretty good, how are you doing?
Okay.
So, good afternoon, I'm Art Starry, I'm the Environmental Health Division Director for Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, and I've just got a few slides to give you some background as to the rationale behind the fee proposal and why we're here. So, someone needs to click the slides. Oh, there they are, they're doing it from behind, secrets. Okay, so the bottom line of the whole thing is that our permit volumes are up. They're up quite a bit, if you look at the slide, the upper one on the right, it shows that we're up about 30 percent since 2014. And in addition to that, there's other indicators that show how much busier we are. For instance, our lab revenue, our lab volume is up about 37 percent in just the past year, so going up from about 7,000 samples per year to almost 10,000. So, things are really busy, and if you look at the economic forecasts and things, it looks like they're gonna stay busy. So that's the good news, the economy's improving, and now there's work associated with the different permit reviews that we've got. The bad news is that we don't have the resources to meet the current and projected workloads, and to meet customer expectations, and actually, there's some legal requirements around turnaround times and initial reviews and things that we're faltering on as well. So we need additional resources to be able to do that. And while we've worked to streamline our processes and make the, you know, review systems and information systems as efficient as we can, while still trying to, you know, do our public health job and kind of look at the most important and most timely sort of reviews, the fact is, we're falling behind. There, we've got backlogs for certain types of applications, for instance, the normal septic system applications that someone comes and applies for, we're eight to 12 weeks out on those. We wanna be at two weeks or less for initial review. Some of the land use reviews are months behind, some of the things for renewing operational certificates are behind. We're not getting to some of our lower risk food service inspections and things that we'd like. So there's a lot of things that we should be doing, that we'd like to be doing, but we don't have the resources. And the reason is, is that frankly, our fee structure's kind of gotten out of pace with the cost that it takes to do the work. In an ideal world, if the fee, if we have more permits coming in, the fee structure should be set to be able to provide the revenue to pay for all the staff that's needed, but the fact is, that some of our internal, I mean, some of our overhead and other costs have increased, that have basically outpaced the costs of the, outpaced the normal increase in permit fees. And so there's a gap there, and that's what that second shelf slide down below, or the second graph is showing, is that if you look at it, you'll see that expenditures, which are the black line on the top, are bigger than revenue, and that's bad. And since we don't have additional revenue sources other than fees for these activities, we need to either cut costs, or we need to increase revenue. So we're proposing that we do a fee increase. So, next slide. So the fee proposal, it increases, you know, the key thing is, it increases most of our environmental health fees by 10 percent. There are a couple of exceptions to that. For instance, the rates and charges for Henderson and Nisqually, they'll stay the same, those were set by an ordinance that was approved by you, we're not tinkering with that. There's some other charges, like the food handler card, which are established by state law, we're not touching that. So those fees stay the same, but the rest of them are going up for 10 percent on average, and that's for all environmental health programs, ranging from food and onsite to solid waste, the types of reviews that we do, the types of services that we provide. And what the fee schedule also does, is it tries to, since we're tinkering with it, we're trying to clarify some of the things that are in there. So for instance, there's some labels that we've changed, we've redefined some processes to make them clear, we've tried to answer some of the questions that some of the public have about, well, you know, tell me why you're charging this fee when this is what I'm trying to do, we're trying to match them up a little bit better. We've also done some things to adjust the fees so that they more accurately reflect what's actually happening, and probably the biggest example there is projects that are served, that are city projects that are on sewer. We used to charge them all the same, whether they were on sewer or septic systems. Well, our review times are less typically for sewer projects, so we're proposing to reduce the base fee by a little bit in order to make that more accurate for the amount of work that's done, because that's what the fees are supposed to cover, is the amount of work that's necessary in order to complete the reviews. The other thing, the other bigger change is that we're trying to, or we're proposing to change the lab fees so that they reflect the actual cost of materials, so there's a tiered lab fee proposal for the drinking water lab. Those fees would go up by $1 to $2 based on the type of review that's done. The more complex reviews, the ones that take more materials, are a little bit higher than the base review. The net effect of all this is that the fee increases go up by 10 percent, that could be as little as a dollar for a lab fee, as much as $170 for a large restaurant that's got a complex or a high-risk food service menu. And as mentioned before, this doesn't apply to Henderson and Nisqually or the food worker cards. So the graph over there, that's looking at the modeling or the budget information we submitted to you in October, we adjusted that to show what the fee increase would do, and then also the staff proposal that's going, and that would, it looks like we would be pretty close. It's hard to project things and know exactly what the revenue's gonna be and whatnot, but that's it. So, next slide. So really what it gets down to, so what does this buy? And I should've put this in bold and caps and whatnot, is it increases our capacity to do reviews, and basically, that are necessary for public health. That's what all this is about, is septic system inspections, food service inspections, doing the reviews of different types of applications, there's a public health basis for all that, generally protect water quality to make sure the food's safe, to make sure that we're managing waste properly, that's the goal of all this. And how we're gonna do that, though, is if the fee proposal goes forward, is the way that the people in the audience are gonna see that, is that it's gonna improve our customer service quality. So we're gonna do a better job as far as being able to be timely on reviews, to complete the types of work that's necessary, that's required by state law and county policy, to try to reduce the permit backlog times, because not only is that frustrating to the public, but in a lot of cases, it's costing them money. If you've got a project that's financed, and now we're adding, taking additional weeks to review it and approve it, and you're financing it, that's a big burden, and you know that, you've heard before in other venues about the costs associated with that, and how people don't like that, and it's, I wouldn't like it either. And to reduce overtime costs. Fortunately, to keep the permit backlogs down, we've had staff working overtime in many venues, they've done it on a voluntary basis, but frankly, you know, you're paying time and a half, and it's, and frankly, a burden to staff, and we're kind of wearing them thin, so we wanna be able to reduce the overtime costs, and also complete the, reduce the deferred and delayed work. And there's also, like I mentioned before, some state standards that apply to how long we're supposed to be reviewing things, or initial reviews, or completed process, things like that, or the number of inspections we're supposed to do for certain food facilities, we wanna be able to do a better job and come into clients with that. And what this would do, then, is if the fee proposal goes forward, and the permit, or the number of permit volume continues as we project, is that would allow us to hire additional staff. And the box on the slide over there on the lower right-hand side describes the three positions that would be funded, and these were the ones we discussed with you earlier this year when we were talking about budget stuff. One would be an environmental health specialist to help in this building to deal with permit backlogs for septic systems and land use reviews. Another would be an environmental health technician, who would help with the lab, and also help out at the front counter, to help make sure that the applications we're getting are complete, and that we've got the best information so that the reviews can be as timely and as efficient as possible. And another one would be over at the Lilly Road Building, and that person would be largely working on operational certificates and renewing those. Again, there's backlogs there, so people, they're doing what we've asked them to do, they're turning in the documentation to show how they're monitoring and maintaining their septic systems, but we're not getting to that as quickly as we'd like. We're not being able to provide them the information or to review if there's problems, and get, provide feedbacks. We need to be able to do a better job of that, and that's what these resources would provide. So really, that's about it. As far as the, kind of the details of the process, we have done our best to do public outreach, we've published notices in the Olympian and the two other county newspapers, so the Nisqually Valley News and the Tino Independent, we've done that a couple of times. We only have to do the one, but we do three. We've emailed to licensed installers, we've sent a postcard out to our licensed food service operators to let them know about it, we've used Facebook and Twitter to try to notify folks, we've gotta set up a webpage, we've sent, I think I mentioned, an email out to our licensed onsite professionals to make them aware of it, and I think there's a few folks here in the audience. And so we've done what we can to do that, and thus far, we've received four comments. One is in support, was from one of our, the cities who uses our lab quite extensively, and they don't have any concerns about the proposed fees. We've received three comments from food service operators, one from a small one, a small operator who was encouraging us to keep one of our programs in place called Certified Operator, and is concerned about the impact that the fees would have on their small business, another one on a restaurant operator who's concerned about the fee increase, and thinks that we should live within our means, basically, that the fee increases, that they don't support the fee increase. And I believe there's another comment that we received indicating that they would like more time to review the proposal and make comments on it. And so that's it, and I tried to be brief.
Sure, we got some questions and comments here.
And next slide is gonna ask that thing, question.
Okay, there you go.
Art, you made a comment that the workload has went up by 30 percent. Has your revenue stream also went up by 30 percent during that time period?
It's gone up, it's not quite gone up by that amount, but it's pretty close, you could page back to the one slide, and you could see that it has gradually increased in association with that, but the, what's happened is the, but not quite.
So that hasn't been enough revenue to hire another position?
Well, we've hired another position, but we need to hire additional positions in order to keep pace with the current workload, at least that's our assessment.
Okay, thank you.
No questions, Art, but just, well, I do have a question, how long have you been doing this?
Environmental health?
Yes.
35 years.
So, your environmental health and septic system, that's in your blood, so to speak, and I wanna tell you how much I value your expertise and your dedication, not only to the environment, but to the citizens of Thurston County.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wasn't expecting that, thank you.
Art, did you say when this becomes effective?
If, well, the ordinance that's proposed, that's been drafted, would make it effective January 1st. And so the ordinance and the proposed fee schedule's in back, and it's been handed around, but you actually, as the Board, have the latitude to do whatever you would like on that if you choose to adopt it. But my understanding is that, or if you consider that, it would be during the budget process in December, and you have the latitude to change it however you would like.
Okay, thanks. Romero, do you have a comment?
Yep.
Shelley, too? Okay, good. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Art.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. So I'm gonna open it up to public testimony, and the first person I have on the list is Min Smith. Hi, Min, come on up to the mic. Can you do, pull the mic down just a bit, come on, there you go, all right. You have the floor, go ahead.
My name is Min Smith, and I've been in food services since 1973. And I like the old system we have, I meet the inspector come into my restaurant, and he go on around, he sees something wrong, he call us up, everybody involved, he say, this is not right, we need to correct it, we need to do this to make it work. Now, a totally different story. Now we have inspector, they only looking for something wrong to write it up, they don't have the class like we usually have in here, to help the people apply for help car, to know what need to be done. Lately, I have some people come in to apply for job, and they show me they have a help car, but actually, they don't know anything about how to make the water, and they don't know much about anything. And I ask them, how do you get your help car? Oh, I get it online. And I went to the class when I have to renew my license, and I sit there, the classroom gets smaller and smaller, it's only like very few people. And you still have instructor standing there with the video go on, and everybody took the license on the internet, and they don't get involved to know what need to be done. And because the county have a lot of busyness, that's not necessarily the restaurant doing well. A lot of people in, and they go out of business when their money run out. And I have many tenant, they couldn't pay bill, and they run out, and they leave. So the busyness, it have very little about improve the business in the county, because the fee is so high already, everything went up, the rent, the utility, and the license, and this year, the sick pay kick in, and very soon, we have new increase in minimum way, everything keep going up, and the restaurant are truckling, because it's a lot of play, people spend money. And if you have bill to pay, you need to pay your mortgage, your car, everything is necessary, and what left, you go to the restaurant. And the restaurant now, it been charged so much for license, I usually pay less than $100 for my concession food, and now it's 500. And it already went up so much, and it can't be said, it's not gonna kill me, because my kitchen's small, but for somebody have big restaurant, that could put them out of business. My time is up.
Yeah, in the last tiny words, in the last few words?
I am at the farmer market right now. I have 296 square foot of kitchen.
Thank you so much today, Land.
You're welcome.
It was very good to see you, you bet. So the next person I have on the list is Erica Van Lierp. Hello, Erica.
Hello, good afternoon.
So can you pull the mic up just a little bit?
Thank you.
No, there you go, all right, we wanna hear you.
Oh, yeah. My name's Erica Van Lierp, and I've owned and operated Vansburger for 18 years. I wonder about the purpose of this, just because of lateness of the notice, wonder, you know, how effective this is gonna be, or if the decision's already been made, because I know budgets are already in full motion for 2019, I know mine is. So, I'm here to obviously speak against the increase of fees, it affects me in many ways besides my home septic, my business septic, my monthly water testing, and also I have two business operation permits, even though they're 20 yards apart. And I was recently required to increase it to high risk, because I grill onions in the morning, even though everything goes from the grill, or from the refrigerator to the freezer, and then out to the grill, out the window. So I've already had a huge increase in my thing, plus, they've been increasing, in 2011, the new fee structure increased them exponentially, and then in 2013, with the CPI index, now that has been going to the tune of 10 percent in the last five years, it's already gone up 10 percent in the last five years. So now, to go another jump in, of 10 percent, that's 20 percent in six years, and that's higher than my food costs have gone. So, you know, yeah, Min's right, everything's gone up with our payroll, and I understand everything's going up for the county as well, that, you know, we're in this together. And I'm assuming that according to the fifth whereas, that the CPI increase is still gonna be in place, so it's still gonna continue to go up every year. I'm just wondering what other options have been explored. I received three postcards, so I would like to see the mailing system purged, and so we're not, you know, 70 cents in postage, plus the paper printing labor, employee expenses to go into that, so that's, would be one thing. You know, I get double billed for my operational permit every year, you know, maybe take that to a single billing, that would be an idea of saving some money. The second whereas of the proposed ordinance reads, "It seeks to assure that the costs to provide services are largely borne by the individuals who request them." So I'm wondering, who's requesting these services? Because the only thing I do is do my operational permit, and I send it in, and I send it in so I don't get charged a late fee, and the check is cashed, but never once has that operational permit been mailed to me. Not once. So I always have to call, and then talk to someone, oh, do, 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 let me see here, maybe it's here on my desk somewhere, I don't know why it hasn't gone out, and it's very frustrating, because that's the one service I ask for, is to have my permit sent to me. So this year, I waited, and waited, and waited to see how long it would actually take. It took till March, and I finally wrote to you, Mr. Blake, my Commissioner, and you contacted the proper people, I was contacted by Art Starry, said it was mailed out the day before, how ironic, but when I received it, it wasn't mailed until the day after, according to the postmark. I can't dump the feeling this proposed increase is smell like the failed crap tax, being loaded onto the shoulders of those who operate tax collection sites. Thurston County needs a dose of motivation and efficiency, not more fees on the hardest working, productive people in the county.
Thank you for your words today, Eric.
Thank you.
You bet. Next I have on my list is Rick Nelson.
Hello, Mr. Nelson, how you doing there?
How you guys doing? My name's Rick Nelson, I own Ricardo's Restaurant, have for 15 years, I am a third generation of restaurant service provided in Thurston County, so I feel like I know a little bit about this industry. Enough's enough with raising taxes and raising fees, I'm up to $1,900 a year that I give just to the Thurston County Health Department, of just one of the little fees I give to the state and our local city. I see it's very inefficient. When I first opened, two years ago, at my new location, you guys are supposed to come out and inspect every six months, I believe it was like month 16, or 17, when I got my first inspection. So, maybe you're behind over there, but why are you billing me more and giving me less of a service? I've tried to call and work directly with the Health Department, and believe my overall concern would be the public safety, and I get absolutely nowhere with them, it's very frustrating, other than keep raising fees. At one point, I was a licensed restaurant, licensed caterer, and had a licensed food truck, and I still would get harassed when I'd go and volunteer time at public events like the barbecue festival and whatnot. And I'm like, I have every license you guys offer, and that was not enough. So, I'm just, overall, just frustrated, so I'm a definite no on any fees being raised, and tell them to figure it out, just like, I've gotta figure out all my fees going up, that's it.
Thank you, thank you for your good words, sir.
No, thank you.
You bet. Next I have Mr. Joe Bushnell. Hello, Joe.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Joe Bushnell with the Washington Hospitality Association, and I represent a lot of the local restaurants here in Thurston County. Just wanted to touch on a few things, like the Health Department, restaurants are also being impacted by increasing operating costs on a daily basis. Market forces, not just only fees, but food prices going up, construction materials going up, if they're trying to do renovation, everything, everything is just going up in costs. And customers are very sensitive to price increases, so when they go to a restaurant that they go to on a daily basis, or monthly, or however often they go out, they notice those little price changes in their menus, and these fees eventually get pushed onto the customers. So restaurants will lose customers, and some could potentially go out of business. So I'm urging the County Health Department to potentially do a more gradual increase over time, gives a chance for customers in restaurants to adjust to the newer fees. 10 percent can still happen, but at a longer, at a longer pace, doing it all at once, like a hammer coming down on our restaurants, is, it makes it difficult for them and their customers to deal with. I'm happy to work with the Health Department, we could figure out if there's any inefficiencies, let's ask those questions, and let's see if we can get more bang for our buck. Obviously, we wanna keep the Health Department running well, and we can come up with some compromises, so, thank you.
You bet. Thank you for your good words today, sir. So that completes those who sign in for the Board of Health, Environmental Health Fee Schedule on the list here. By show of hand, out of the audience, is there anyone would like to come up individually and speak behind the podium to the Board? Yes, sir, please come forward. And, your first name, last name, and generally where you're from in the county?
So, good afternoon, I'm J.R. Edman with Northwest Cascade, I'm actually from the septic side of all of this, and, so I work, my company works within the county doing the services that are provided, and a lot of the fees that we're talking about here. I'll tell you, I'm not excited about them either, but I also understand, as a business, as everybody I've just listened to said, their fees have gone up, and you have to do some things differently in business to figure out how to make things happen. I have to believe, having worked with the county and sat on some of the advisory committees and things over the years, and worked with several of the people in here, Martin, Steve, that there is reason for doing this. I'm not excited about it, but I also understand it. I would suggest that you look at it, and we would support that it be done, because we also need to have our reviews happen for installation, for maintenance, for the pumpings that are being done, being gotten back for people that are doing sales of homes, all of those kind of things. Eventually, things are getting held up that shouldn't be, and if it's lack of people, I have the same problem in my business, I don't have enough people doing the work, I gotta figure it out, and if that's what it takes, I gotta believe we need to do something different. So, there's a cost to me in business if they aren't able to do their job and get things back out to us in a timely fashion. And as a licensed installer, maintainer, and pumper, that means a lot, we need that stuff to happen, or it costs us money, and it costs the consumer more money. So, I would encourage you to consider that it does need to happen, thank you.
Thank you for your words, sir. All righty, by show of hand, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come to the podium to address the Board? Seeing no one, okay, I'll move on, is there any comments or questions you have for follow-up, based off what you've heard, to Art, or Romero, or Shelley, or Robin?
Well, I can just tell you, I hate to hear about septic and food service in the same sentence, so. I'll just let it go at that for now.
And fees.
Yeah, wow.
Do you have any comments? No, no, okay, sure. Anything, Romero, Robin, Shelley, just checking, okay, with that in mind, that concludes the testimony portion of this Board of Hearing for the Environmental Health Fee Schedule, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
It's been moved to second to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are, close the public, we closed the public hearing. There's a motion to adjourn the Environmental Health Fee public hearing, and stay tuned, because we're gonna roll right over to the other Board, to the other public hearing, so is there a motion to adjourn this portion?
I move to adjourn this portion, November 27th, 2017.
Second?
2018.
Yeah, thank you.
Aye, Paul.
Second?
It's been moved to second to adjourn the Environmental Health Fee Board of Health testimony and public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned. Okay, we're gonna move right into the public hearing for adopt Section 2.105 Thurston County Code, just give me about 10 seconds to get everybody in and out. Yeah, I got them right here, I'm good. Oh, got it, got it. Huh? Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Right now.
Yeah, we're gonna do both, we're gonna do both.
The next three, or the next two.
This is the road thing, the sheriff thing.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But this one, I don't think.
... property is currently split between the Board of County Commissioners and Public Works Department. Efficiencies will be gained by delegating management and marketing of these properties and to Thurston County Treasurer. Adding Section 2.105 disposition of tax title property to the Thurston County Code will allow Thurston County Treasurer to facilitate the purchase/sale allow Thurston County Treasurer to facilitate the purchase, sale, exchange, disposal, lease, improvement, encumbrance, or division of tax title property. So there is a sign-in sheet in the back if you haven't signed in already, and there'll be three minutes on the board when you come to the podium, and it goes from three minutes to zero minutes, and then when it hits the buzzers down, that's the end of your time, and I'll ask you to finish up. If you're midstreaming your thoughts, I'll let you finish up, but I'll ask you, I'll kind of prompt you to finish at the same time, so they get both those ends for your First Amendment rights and staying within the three minutes. With that in mind, Treasurer, Mr. Jeff Gadman's going to come to the podium and give us a little bit of background and some additional information, and any questions, answers, and follow-up discussion, then I'll have any of the public come to the, to the board. Hello, Mr. Gadman, how are you doing?
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I'm Jeff Gadman, Thurston County Treasurer. This issue deals with, excuse me, this issue deals with tax title property. What tax title property is, is when the county treasurer forecloses on property because of a non-payment of property taxes after three years. County Treasurer auctions the property off. If a property receives no bids, then the county does not actually get possession of that property. The county is holding that property in trust for the taxing districts. The idea is, at some point, the property's going to be marketed and sold, and the proceeds from that sale are going to make the taxing districts whole from the money that they lost when the taxes were not being paid. Over time, so RCW says that the County Commission, the Board of County Commissioners, is responsible for the maintenance and marketing of these properties and management of these properties. Over time, the County Commissioners, since I've been in, in the county employment 1986, it's moved around to various departments that are under the purview of the County Commissioners. Seems like it's always ended up in a spot where the person who has responsibility for these properties doesn't really have time to effectively market and manage these properties. What I'm proposing is to modify county ordinance so that, and add this to the code, so that the management of these properties comes under the purview of the County Treasurer. This will allow, I have a person who does have the time to properly market and dedicate himself to learning what each of these properties is. Currently have a little over 180 properties on the list of tax title properties. Some of them have been in county possession since 1929. Quite honestly, there are some of them that absolutely will not ever sell, especially the ones that are under, like St. Clair. But there are many of them that we believe we can sell, make the taxing districts whole, and put them back on the tax rolls so they're producing revenue for the county.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Gadman?
No, it sounds like you're looking to save the taxpayers some money, and I commend you for that.
I'm trying. Thank you.
Looking for more work to do.
That's okay. Bring it on.
Yeah, thank you for your effort, your staff and your team for doing this. It's a great effort in terms of letting the public know that there's a thorough process for them to be able to participate, so.
Thank you for your consideration.
Sure. And so with that in mind, I ask if there's anybody, any sign-in sheets for this particular public hearing, and, no? So anybody from the audience would like to come and testify on this particular public hearing? Show of hands, seeing no one? All right, that brings us to the motion options. Is there a motion to move, move to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
It's been moved to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the public hearing is closed. What is the prerogative of the board? Would you like to move forward with the approval of the amendment?
I would.
I would.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I move to approve the amendment of Thurston County Code 2.105, disposal of tax title property, given the Thurston County Treasurer the authority to manage tax title property.
Second?
It's been moved to second. It is stated, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very, very much. And I would like to give a real big shout out to Romero and to Labonita for helping me. This is my first time I've ever prepared a public hearing, so thank you both very much.
That just means you'll keep coming back for others. So the next public hearing is also on here on November 27th, 2018, is the public hearing to consider amending Thurston County Code Chapters 1, 2, or 12 dot 04 and 12 dot 61 Traffic Code, creating a new section defining wheeled all-terrain vehicles and new section allowing the operations of wheeled all-terrain vehicles on county roads with posted speed limits of 35 miles per hour or less. So the purpose is, in 2013, 19, 2013, the Washington State legislation passed engrossed substitute bill, House Bill 1632, amending revised code of Washington, otherwise known as RCW, Chapter 46 dot 90, off-road, non-highway, and wheeled all-terrain vehicles, otherwise known as WATVs, to allow, among other things, counties to regulate the operation of non-highway vehicles on streets, roads, or highways. The proposed ordinance was presented to the Board of County Commissioners on October 30th, 2018, and has been available by request for review and comment since the date, and has been posted on Thurston County Sheriff's Office website since then. So, so just like the previous public hearing, there's a sign-in sheet in the back if you wish to testify. There's three minutes on the board, on the clock to my left, to your right. And with that in mind, I'm going to ask our wonderful Sheriff, Don Snazza, to come back, come to the podium and give a little bit of background and the proposal, and any kind of written comments, and just kind of give the overall view of what's going on here.
Thank you, Commissioner. John Snazza, Thurston County Sheriff. This proposal has been, kind of been coming up to me since it was passed in 2013, and after reviewing our traffic incidents on the Thurston County highways, and seeing what we're dealing with in mostly the 35 mile an hour or less zones, we haven't had any reported incidents of serious collisions or vehicle assaults, if you will, or type of crimes involving WATVs, or anything that, that, anything of criminal nature that has really been reported to the Thurston County Sheriff's Office, though occasionally we do contact individuals that are on the highway in all-terrain vehicles that are not licensed drivers nor their vehicle's license. One of the big things that really came to light was when we were out at the Capital Forest, and we have a lot of functions with motorcyclists and WATVs out there, and it is a 35 mile an hour or less. And here we have all these riders riding on the side of the road, trying to get to and from, and I'm going like, why aren't we passing an ordinance that allows them to do it with a licensed vehicle so that they don't have to worry about, A, being ticketed for not having a licensed vehicle or being allowed on that roadway? So this ordinance is for WATVs for 35 mile an hour or less throughout Thurston County. It's only for 35 mile an hour or less zones. Unfortunately, if a citizen lives on a 40 or 50 mile an hour roadway and wants to drive to their 35 mile an hour zone with a WATV, it is still illegal and will be held accountable. But I want to make it clear that we do want to enforce a law to ensure that all riders are riding a vehicle that has been properly licensed by Department of Licensing and that they are licensed driver to be allowed on this roadway. But I do believe, because it has been passed by voters, that we should make it available to the citizens of Thurston County. And I just want to let the members in the audience know, or anybody who's listening, that I am available for phone calls if you have any complaints or issues about this that we can address.
Yeah, great, sure. Any questions of the sheriff?
Well, I would just agree with you that this is about time, but there was something said earlier about wonderful. I don't know about wonderful, but maybe a nice guy.
Thank you, sir. It is the holiday season, though.
Okay, yeah.
You have any question of the sheriff?
Of course they do. We don't get the sheriff in front of us very often.
Keep him there, then.
I actually would just want to comment, I've been here for about two hours.
That's true. That's true. Now, this has been posted, Sheriff, on the website, TCSO's website, and we've discussed it and such in public fashion. Has there been any responses? Have you received any calls, emails, any, any responses?
I have not. I have not personally received any phone calls, and to my knowledge, we have not received any complaints about this.
Thank you, have we? Okay, then, I'm done.
All right, anything else, Sheriff?
Nothing, sir.
Romero, Robin, anything? Okay, with that in mind, I'll open it up to the public. If there's anybody who would like to come forward to the podium to speak, raise your hand. Come on up, Randy, we'll let you speak. I knew you would. So Randy, you have three minutes.
Okay, my name's Randy Selness. I've been living in Thurston County my whole life. I'd like to just make a couple points that a lot of, most of people that own these WATVs, that they're, they're fairly higher income, they're probably just like a Harley-Davidson riders, the average income is like $80,000 a year. It's probably even higher for these WATVs, because they're really expensive and they're just a really expensive toy. And then you have to make them street legal, put blinkers on them, put mirrors. They already have roll cages, they have harnesses, seat belts. I mean, they're really safe anyway. We're going under 35. I mean, they're super, they're way more safe than a lot of small smart cars on the road, for sure. And people that are driving are usually really responsible. I know I am. I don't know about some of these other hooligans in here, but they probably are too. And you can do the same thing with, with a motorcycle. I have a dirt bike, you know, really fast off-road dirt bike, that legally, I put some blinkers on it and a couple little fold-up mirrors and a license plate, and I got that street legal. And my, my ATV is way more sa, and I can, I can go over 35 on it. I can go down the freeway on my dirt bike, and it's totally legal. But I can't, I can't ride my ATV on the, on a 35 mile an hour road that has a harness and a roll cage. It's just kind of ridiculous, really.
Good point.
So that's, that's my point, and thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your good words. And anybody else in the audience? Yes, sir, come on up. I don't know, state your first and last name.
Hi, my name is Troy Stevens. I live out in the Little Rock area. So the convenience for me, for being able to drive one of the UTVs from home to neighbor to neighbor type of settings, I live in an area where everything is zoned, one house and five acres. So to get from one house to another house, to be able to drive your ATV is a huge benefit for me. Also, the, for us, Capital Forest is just right around the corner. We're within about four miles from being on trails up at Capital Forest. So just being able to jump in, it's a recreation that my family and I just really enjoy. We do it as a family, and we just love it. As Randy mentioned, these things aren't cheap, and for them to sit in the garage for the majority of the year, because you're trying to find a place that you can ride them, it, this gives us one more tool to be able to get out and just use them more and enjoy the county. So definitely in favor of it.
You bet, sir. Thank you for your good words. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir, come on. How you doing there?
Hi, my name is Tom Owens. I live in the Olympia area. And just like the reasons they said, you know, I'd like to be able to, I haven't purchased one yet. My condition partially for purchasing one is the fact that I could drive it on a 35 mile an hour zone and get to where I want to ride. I don't want it to sit in the garage, you know, 11 months out of the year, and then one month go drive it twice for $20,000. Also, I think it helps the community a little bit with fees and different things. We can, you know, obviously, we're going to register it, we're going to pay the fees, the registrations every year. We're not going to block up all of Capitol Park, you know, Capitol City area with the, with trailers and all of that sitting there, because we had to trailer them there. They are much safer than even those slingshots and the different three-wheel vehicles that are out there. We've got full harnesses on them. I think it's, I think it'd just be, it'd be good. I'm in favor.
Thank you for your words, sir. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to come to the podium? Yep, sure.
Commissioner, could, could I have you request Chad to have to come up here?
I'm in favor as well. We've, I've rode motorcycles my whole life.
First name and last?
My name's Chad Martin.
Chad Martin, okay.
I live in Tumwater. I've lived in Lewis and/or Thurston County my whole life. It'd be much more convenient than having to throw them on a trailer every time you want to take them somewhere. It would make, you know, them much more useful and much more cost-effective instead of, it's a hassle to, you know, have to put them on a trailer and trailer them over someplace, because some of the trailers run pretty big, and if we could ride them to where we're going to use them, it would be a huge convenience. And I agree with the, the safety issues. There are many vehicles that are street legal that are way less safe than these things. So, you know, that, to me, seems like a conflict, you know, if, if, if safety is the reason. And also, I don't think it's going to have any impact on traffic or anything like that, because, I mean, I don't know what the statistics are and how many of these things are even in the county, but I'm sure it's not very many, and on any one given day, I don't think it would have any impacts on traffic really either, right? Because there's just not that many of them that run around, so.
Thank you for your words, sir. Anybody else by show of hand? Would you like to? No? No? Okay. All righty, any comments or questions, concerns?
Well, I guess at some point farther down the road, once we find out how this works out, or if it gets passed, I guess, I don't want to prejudge what's going to happen here. But I'd actually like to see at some point something happen, like, very much like a farm plate is issued to individuals, and have a certain radius that you could actually cross a 50 mile an hour road legally and maybe go down the road a certain distance. I don't know what that distance is, but I, I see that this could save us from an environmental standpoint as well. I mean, what, what's better on the environment? Jumping in your, your Ford 350 and driving down to the grocery store two miles away, or running down to the store with this thing? So just something to think about as time goes on and see how this, you know, incremental steps, maybe.
Though we have a sheriff and a former sheriff being in favor of it, in support of it. I had nothing to say. Nope.
Romero, Robin, no? Okay, with that in mind, is there, I'll close the public hearing portion and ask, no, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
It's been moved to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. And what is the pleasure of the board? Would you like to move forward to adopt or approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve an ordinance amending Thurston County Code Chapters 12.04 and 12.61 Traffic Code, creating a new section defining wheeled all-terrain vehicles as a new section allowing the operation of a wheeled all-terrain vehicles on county roads with a posted speed limits of 35 miles per hour or less.
Second?
It's been moved to second. It is stated, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Sheriff, you have your motion.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, yeah. The next public hearing is still November 27th.
Want to close this one or not?
Next public hearing is for, public hearing to receive testimony.
Can we, can we take it outside, please? We need to continue with the, the business.
You don't have to leave, you just have to be quiet.
All right. The next public hearing is to receive testimony on the 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, otherwise known as the CAPER. The public hearing is to give opportunity for the public to provide any comments on the 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report required by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. There's a sign-in sheet in the back, and there'll be three minutes posted, and with that in mind, I'll ask if Mr. Gary Ayden would come forward to the podium to give us a little bit of background, any written comments, and any additional information concerning this subject. Gary?
Thank you, sir. Gary Ayden, Public Health and Social Services. The CAPER is a required report by HUD. It reports on the activity from September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2018. That's the time period for our program here with HUD. In that total, in that time period, the county invested $1,424,922 in projects that served the city of Yelm, city of Tonino, the town of Bukota, and Lacey and Tumwater. They included projects like the Bukota Water Line. On Nanant Street, we replaced three blocks worth of water line in the, in the town of water line in the, in the town of Bukota. We did new housing construction for low-income folks with our Housing Authority, acquisition of housing with Homes First, rehab of a drug facility, drug treatment facility in the city of Lacey, Evergreen Treatment Services, and public services, including a veterans homeless outreach program run by Sidewalk, and a Boys and Girls Club in Lacey program, which we provided scholarships for low-income youth. So, in total, those, that one point four million went in thirty different contracts with private sector businesses. That's not often pointed out, but we give the money to nonprofits, and to cities, and towns, and they then, in turn, contract with agencies, private contractors, to do work in the community. That resulted in thirty contracts for that one point four million. And the purpose of this hearing is to take any public comment on the activities conducted during the program year for two thousand and seventeen.
Any questions of Gary?
No, I would just say thank you, Gary, for helping those folks that are less fortunate than us.
Thank you.
Yes, you know what I think of the work and your efforts at the county. I tell you all the time.
Yep.
So, I have no, no questions, no.
I have no other comments, and so I'll ask if there's anybody in the public that would like to come forward to the podium to speak. Seeing no one, and there's any sign-in sheets, just to double-check. Nope. Do you have any comments or questions of Gary? Nope. So, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the public hearing is closed. And what is the pleasure of the board to accept the two thousand and seventeen consolidated annual performance and evaluation report?
Yep.
I would like to.
Is there a motion to accept?
Yep, I move to accept the two thousand and seventeen consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, and authorize the Public Health and Social Services Department to submit the document to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
It's been moved to second. It is stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and your motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gary.
Is there a motion to adjourn all the public hearings we've heard today?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn all public hearings of November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
It's been moved to second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned.
Hey, Gary, you got a second?